Well, good afternoon, everyone. The hour being three o'clock, I'll call this regular council meeting. For the town of Innisail to order this twelfth day of October, 3:00 PM, 2021. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions wished?
Yes, your worship, under section. Thirteen point three in camera, land developments, as per the MGA. Hundred ninety, one ninety seven, section two, through the Foyt legislation. Harmful to business interests, section sixteen, one, A, two.
Please. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Entertain a motion to adopt this agenda as amended.
Yes, your worship, I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, counsel. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. First item on the agenda of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September twenty seventh for consideration with someone like move we adopt those minutes as submitted.
I'll move those, your worship.
Thank you, counselor. Bates. Any errors or omissions to be noted? Oh, I'm sorry, Danny. Yes, under. Section seven point two, I had recused myself from that item and it's not noted in the minutes. Good point. I guess we'll. Make note of that, take care of that, I'm sure. Thank you. Anything else? No. All right, and now ask the question, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, public hearings for the. Consideration for the land use bylaw amendment of fourteen seventy dash A seventy three. The. Just a housekeeping thing, I'll quickly run through the procedure for the public hearing, that. First order of. Business will be to introduce the bylaw by minute. I think Director Jenkins will be introducing that. And and after her submission. We'll call to hear from anyone in support of the bylaw. And then we'll also give the opportunity to call for anyone opposed to the bylaw. Right? And of course, counsel is. Welcome to ask questions as well of. Factual. But but not to enter into debate. Okay. So the first thing I'll ask is Director Jenkins.
Okay, thank you. So by law fourteen seventy dash A seventy three is an amendment to the land use bylaw. This is a staff initiated amendment looking to streamline and improve sections of the bylaw. Amendments to the following sections have been proposed. Mobile commercial sales to remove the requirement for a development permit. Home occupation class ones to again remove the requirement for a development permit provided. The activity complies with all the regulations within the land use bylaw. The can, the elimination of the direct control district A three. So this is the rezoning of a number of properties. From the direct control A three district to the residential transition district. This area is very similar in nature and many permits within the direct control district have had to go through an MPC process for minor changes in occupancy. Adding time and frustration to applicants, the transition district provides a similar range of uses. With more falling within the permitted permitted use listing. The bylaw offer off also proposes changes to secondary suite regulation as well as some miscellaneous. Updates relating to signs landscaping provisions, minimum floor area requirements. This public hearing was advertised in the Town Voice. And as a standalone ad within the El Burton, it was on the town website. And notices were directly sent to those property owners within. The direct control district as well as all of the adjacent property owners to that area. I did receive about four calls of inquiry. Just more to clarify the impact of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to speak in support of this. This process. Amendment to the bylaw. No? Okay, I'll ask if anyone to speak against the proposal. For the amendment to this bylaw. Yes, sir. Would you give us your name and address? Sure, if you like.
Yeah, my name's Ken Hart. I own a couple of the properties that are adjacent to the proposed amendments. And not necessarily opposed, but definitely from reading what it was sent to me, I've got a lot of questions about it. It's not clear. What the real reason for the amendment is it? The only thing it says in here is says it's. To promote redevelopment in the region. And. If you look at that region already. On the south side or south side, there's quite a few properties that are older. Some have had some obvious. Upgrades and that sort of thing, but on the north side. Most all the properties are have been redeveloped in the last thirty years, so why would you? Want to resign when half of it's already been redeveloped?
Okay. Director Jenkins, would you be able to offer explanation for that?
So I guess when we look at the direct control district that's currently in place for this. So the the two permitted uses that show up as direct as within the direct control are four plexes and offices. When you actually go down that street, it is largely a mix of single family homes, there are a couple of. Multi-family dwellings as well as a couple of homes that have been converted for primarily business purposes. So by changing to the residential transition district, it actually gives these properties a wider range of of opportunities. Including the the ability to either rebuild a detached dwelling if they so choose. Or to even develop as a duplex or have a secondary suite. None of those uses were included in that direct control district. Even home occupations aren't included in the direct control district, so we were having people come forward. Within that area and right now the bylaw was not functional to. The needs of those current residents. And as we, as we've seen in some of the areas when we first developed that residential transition district, our downtown isn't. Growing or requiring that commercial space, I don't think at the rate that was once anticipated. So allowing these these residential areas to sort of exist with some flexibility. That that is the the general intent of that area or of the of the rezoning. Was to eliminate some of those those barriers for the the existing houses.
Okay, so you're saying for the existing houses and. Units that are already there.
For sure, yeah. Because right now, the way the bylaw is is structured under that direct control district. If someone wanted to say rebuild their their home, the bylaw doesn't actually even permit for that, they'd have to redevelop as a. A multi-family like a fourplex or something like that, so.
So one of the other things I noticed in here was that. That like there's a list of. Lots and plans that are covered in here and I just noticed a couple like. I think it's fifty thirty six, it's a duplex. And it's it's mentioned in there, but the unit that is attached to it is not mentioned.
Okay.
Why would that be?
It should reflect what is within that that square is what the. The list is.
Yeah.
Is required.
If I read it, I can't. Say that it is that area.
Okay.
For example, that. I just. You know, in Google Street View and was looking at him and I said, okay, there's fifty thirty six, but about fifty thirty four, straight next adjacent, but it's not in there. I just assume that if you got a bylaw, it would be very specific about what parts are. Are included.
So that that should be the listing, if if there's an error, we'll have to to look into if a property was missed, but. Those addresses that are listed should reflect what's what's outlined in the square.
So I didn't look very closely at that, I'm wondering how many other properties you missed. The other thing. The units that I own are actually in this little bit of R three that's there. And. You know, why the heck have you got? An R three and then a D C D that you want to convert to rural transition or residential transition right here around it? Why would you do that?
I guess the the R three is a is a multi-family district, the residential transition allows for a variety of of residential uses. That that are compatible with those existing, I think they're duplexes within that R three zone.
This just seems a little strange, wouldn't you? Want to include them or?
I guess at this point it was to to clarify and to. Allow those direct control district properties that were having the the issues where within the R three district, there's a wide range of of uses that are available to those properties.
Okay. So I would say. Based on the answers I've got to my questions that I would be opposed to it. I don't see. That it would be giving us. Value to the whole district. That you're thinking of will, I think it's already been. Well, on its way to being redeveloped. And I don't think we want to see more businesses in that area. I think I'd rather see more. More residential units. You know, would like like to see some of the. Vacant lots that are adjacent to it in the commercial district. Developed into something a little more palatable. Like parks or something like that.
Here, so Mr. Hart, you're you're saying what you feel is. There's been enough development there, you don't want any more commercial?
Yeah, not commercial.
Multi-family or?
I think it's more of a residential area.
Yeah.
It should stay that way.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's. You know, it's an area that people are are actively redeveloping, so you've got all those. Duplexes and fourplexes along there, they're about thirty years old. There's a new. A newer fourplex in there. And some of the houses, they've been doing upgrades to them. You know, so they're actively renovating. So there's a few there that, you know, could be improved for sure, but I'd rather see a some sort of residential.
Director Jenkins, this is the area too where you can, if you want to replace your house, you can't rebuild on it, right? Under the current regulation.
Currently, that is correct, so Karen, if you just want to scroll to the next page, it has the table of uses. So it shows. What's currently allowed under the direct control district in the left column? And then what the change would be for the residential transition district. So again, for permitted uses in that D C D area, you have accessory buildings, fourplexes and offices are the are the permitted uses of what can happen there currently. Where with the proposed rezoning, we have detached dwellings, we have duplex dwellings, home occupations, offices, secondary suites. Coming into that list. Where. It actually what we're moving to is more of a residential centric district than what it currently is when you again get down into those discretionary uses. There's a lot more of those kind of business uses where the the residential uses are permitted currently.
Doesn't doesn't really read like that, though it reads more like it's. The bylaws to promote more businesses rather than residential activities. To me, anyway.
I think I think. In most cases, it's. Directs. To a residential situation, whether it's duplex or, you know. Tax detached dwellings, that type of thing, but. I see the offices, you know, it would. Quite likely be permitted anyways, because it has in the past. It's not changing a lot, other than it's probably. Clarifying a little better for what people can do, because I know I've had a number of people come to me and say, you know. I can't even, I can't even rebuild my house now because of the zoning. You know, if something, my house burns down, I can't rebuild there and that type of thing, so. It's difficult for some, you know, you can understand that, sure, but. And that's that's one area that's being addressed for sure, so. But I think the majority of the intent of the transition is still towards residential of some nature. Was, you know, some also. Potential for offices or home occupation, but they're permitted on almost throughout the town, so. You know.
So it wouldn't.
No.
Just asking, wouldn't R three be a better? Suit suitable or more suitable if you're trying to promote more residential?
Well, R three, of course, is a different story again of what it's allowed, Megan would have to clarify that to you, the difference, but. What would the difference be?
So R three would, again, wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to rebuild a single detached dwelling. Or a duplex within that, you would have to move to a fourplex or row house or one of those higher density. Types of of residential structure.
So if your house burnt down.
Yeah.
You would have to build a fourplex?
We do have, that's how the districts are worded, where you're in R three and you're. You're called a non-legal, non-conforming use as a single family dwelling. So your ability, say, if you wanted to completely reveal rebuild your home in an R three district, you would be limited.
Because my units are in the R three area, I don't. If one of them burned down, I would want to rebuild what's there.
Yeah.
You're saying that can't or?
Not currently on the R three, no. That's, those are the kind of things that we're trying to be a little more. I guess. Cognizant of the. Of the people and they're in, you know, specific intent, not everybody's moving or leaving or building the business there. But. Does that clarify to you then, Mr. Hart, a bit what what the intent is here?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't think we're trying to create a situation for high rises or anything else, but it's. It's just to. Sort of make the community a little more. I guess. Neighborly to to work with different people on different needs, but mostly still in the residential area, but.
I do find that interesting, though, that. Zoning can be such that you can't even rebuild what you what you have, that craziness, everything.
I know. While they get in some areas where they just don't say, okay, when that if that house is gone. That's going to be commercial. In the zoning and. It doesn't go over very well in small towns, especially. But. Yeah.
Okay. Said, I don't think I'm still, I'm for it, but. Thanks for.
Okay.
Finding those things and.
All right, any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else in the gallery that's interested? But counsel, have you got any questions of the situation? I think we've been discussing the council, hey, hell.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I I feel the the intent would give a lot of the visitor property owners some flexibility. One of the big things is an infill, I know that with an aging community, we have a lot of really nice properties, but the homes. Definitely are due for upgrade, so. Without having having those restrictions in place, like being allowed to have an infill or rebuild. You know, detached dwelling, I I was, is a big reason why I I would be in favor of of amending this bylaw, so.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay. What about the virtual, anything out there that's? Being mentioned?
Your worship, can I just clarify on the on the R three and the, we often use the example of the catastrophic fire typically. In that type of situation, there may be the ability to rebuild, but when there are these types of. Neighborhoods where the higher density zoning is in place, that is the target, right? That's the the preferable type of redevelopment, but.
Difficult, but when someone questions you. Hypothetically, can I rebuild my house? Well, no.
Yeah.
Not according to the zoning, not saying that counsel may overturn that decision, but.
Correct, we just don't want to be that cool part.
Yeah.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to ask a question? Please raise your hand.
Your worship, through to Director Jenkins, I think maybe maybe Mr. Hart might be interested in knowing the other area that we. Moved to RT was up on Forty Ninth Avenue, so I can't remember the exact.
Just the street, yeah. So both Forty Ninth Street. The north and south side of Forty Ninth Street and the north and south side of Forty Eighth Street. Between Forty Ninth and the United Church are also under a a similar zoning where they were previously central business district. And again, those properties were were quite limited in what they. Could do because the zoning indicated that they should be shifting. Primarily towards a commercial district where this. Transition district allows for that that flexibility and a little bit more of an incremental change over time. In response to to the development pressures that we may may experience.
Okay, any other questions of? Administration, if not, then. I would. See that. We've got no one else interested for against. In our case. I guess I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I saw movie worshiped in close to public hearing.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Thank you. It will be, Mr. Hart, to ending, it will be discussed later. And debated by counsel one more time in the. When there's a request for a decision on the on the final bylaw, later on in the agenda, if you care to state, but it's up to you. At that time, it'll just be council discussion, it won't be from outside, so. But it's open, you're welcome to attend. Anyways, the next item on the gender is the public hearing regarding. Bylaw amendment fourteen seventy A seventy four, Director Jenkins. And it's saying like, I don't think I have to do the housekeeping thing about procedure, but. Administration will make their case and you'll have your opportunity after to speak for or against.
All right, thank you. So land use bylaw amendment fourteen seventy A seventy four is an amendment at the request of the property owner. To add contractor services major and manufacturing industries as a discretionary use. On fifty two oh seven fiftieth street within the highway commercial district. So if you want to go to the map, so that's the property there, just directly south of the tourist information booth. West of the RV sunny dump. So the owners of the property have applied to add to discretionary uses to the highway commercial district. The requested uses to be added are contractor services major and manufacturing industries. The requested uses are intended to accommodate potential tenant to operate a small scale welding shop. The operation will include mobile welding services, onsite repairs and fabrication. As well as outdoor storage of materials such as steel and pipe racks, trailers and trucks. So the bylaw definition of contractor services major is a development used in the delivery. And support of construction related activities typically uses include but are not limited to building construction, landscaping, concrete installation. Excavating, drilling, paving, road construction or similar services. Of a construction nature which require outdoor onsite storage of materials or mobile equipment. And then manufacturing industries means the fabrication processing or assembly of materials, goods and articles to produce items of enhanced value. So this bylaw would give effect that if approved, the two requested uses would apply solely to the property indicated. Not to other properties that are designated under the highway commercial district. The applicant has provided the rationale for adding the two uses to enable the shop to be developed. That the current zoning of the property is highway commercial. That it's the front half is currently used by double D trailer sales, however, the back piece where the shop is located. Is not suitable for a number of the uses that are outlined in the highway commercial district. Including its proximity to the RV sewer dump. And the street being gravelled and not paved, so. Again, the lot uses to the northeast and west of the lot are a mix of commercial and industrial uses. Residential uses to the south and southwest, the trail corridor into Madison Park separates the lot from the residential parcels. There is, there's a bit of background on this lot that it was previously industrial, but was changed to highway commercial back in two thousand and four. As the area began. To have the residential development to the south. So in addition to the requests from the applicant administration has suggested the inclusion of two additional clauses in the bylaw. That was that are with respect to the open storage and the buffering. And visual screening of that open storage. So again, this bylaw was advertised in the El Burton on the website and. Direct notices were mailed to all adjacent property owners. Prior, I had not received any contact on this bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. I guess the first thing I will do is ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of this amendment proposal. No? All right, then, is anyone here wishing to speak against this amendment? Okay. How about? The internet, you got anybody there?
Is there anybody on Zoom? Please raise your hand.
Oh, okay, thank you. How about counsel, any questions, any discussion? No? I know we've been through it and discussed it once, gave it first reading to. Get this process underway, so I think we're all familiar with it, but certainly open to discussion if. There is concern in the. In the community, doesn't appear to be. Okay, I guess I would. Entertain entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Also move your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Barclay. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. And thank you, Director Jenkins, for your effort, very good. Okay.
Your worship, may I interject, sorry, I just want to do to the anticipated length of the delegations. Counsel would consider moving down onto the agenda to eight point one and eight point two to work through your deliberation on the two public hearings.
Absolutely, I'd be. Acceptable to that, is that acceptable, Terrence?
Your worship, I maybe through to CEO Becker, I own a property on Forty Eighth Street in this area, should I recuse myself? Your worship, I maybe through to CEO Becker, I own a property on forty eighth street in this area. Should I recuse myself?
I believe that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We'll let the minutes reflect that.
Okay, we've made note that Counselor Barclay has excused herself for proximity to the situation on this. Consider on this amendment. The first thing I guess is the RFD regarding the land use by law fourteen seventy eighty seventy three, Director Jenkins.
So I don't have a whole lot to add from our, from the previous introduction. Again, most of these amendments were identified by staff as ways to improve, improve efficiencies and help to streamline parts of the bylaw or clarify different sections. I will note that the bylaw as proposed does reflect the removal of the sections regarding adult care housing and group home regulations as was directed by council upon first reading. The motion that's recommended is to approve as amended. And if you look on page one thirty seven of the agenda, it's the actual bylaw indicating the removal of section fourteen. This is with respect to home occupation class ones. So on further discussion with some colleagues, the recommendation was to actually leave home occupation class ones within the district lists, even though they're exempt from, from actually requiring a permit, but they still remain within the permitted use list. So that's what that amendment is, is reflecting upon further consideration of the change. Doesn't impact the effect of it, just the way it's laid out in the bylaw.
All right. I guess to before we can proceed, but discussion, would someone like to move that we give this amendment second reading? I will so move that we give this second reading. Thank you, Counselor Reberger. Discussion. Counselor Bates?
That's just a question. So obviously every time we do this type of thing, there's something that just gets on the edge of and anything like that would still come to municipal planning commission if it's not clearly spelled out. The parking, that sort of thing.
Yeah. And that's the, the reason with the home occupations to leave it within the listed uses. So if there is something even on the, the edge that Tracy could still require as a development officer, a permit for that home op, because it's within the listed use. If it was, you know, a little bit more than what a, oh, a basic office only. Or if it was more so, it would be the home op twos that come to, to municipal planning commission. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Harrison.
Now, thank you, worship through to Director Jenkins. Do we have suites now in the duplexes that are in non-compliance?
We do.
You, that's, that's okay. Thank you. Supplementary question, your worship?
Yes.
So with approval of this bylaw, then they would become compliant?
They, they still don't have permits, but right now where we have come across where they, they do exist, there, there's no avenue for them to become compliant. They aren't permissible. So even the building inspector to go in and try to issue a building permit, we get caught in this. We know they're there, but there's no real way for them to, to achieve compliance. So that's the, the hope here that if they do comply with the bylaw and we can get them up to code, then we'll know about them and they'll be, be safe.
And we do have a program to help them along financially.
We don't right now. If we are working on it, we have that infill program so that, that provides some of the, that support. But we have been looking at some other options as well in terms of even a registry so that we have it clearly laid out. Just spoke to someone this morning, that leased a suite and has now moved into it and is aware that it's probably not where it needs to be in terms of, of building codes. So I think this is a step in, in starting that education process and working to, to try to improve the, the quality of these rental spaces.
Okay, thank you. And just one, one final one. So if an individual wanted to sell his duplex, he wouldn't be able to. He'd be non-compliant. At this point in time until the bylaw.
Correct.
In a minute. Okay. Thank you very much, Director Jenkins.
Counselor Hill.
Yes, thank you, worship. Just to previously state that I don't see this having a negative impact. I believe it creates more flexibility and opportunity for the current landowners or future landowners. I don't see it hindering any kind of development. I think it opens more doors and it closes. So I would definitely be in favor of, of this.
Any other comments, questions? Ask the question and all in favor of the motion? Carrie. I think we would entertain a motion to proceed to third reading.
A move that we give third reading. I don't think we have to proceed to a move that we give third reading to by law fourteen seventy eight seventy three.
Okay, thank you. Need to further discussion? Last question, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right, Director Jenkins, you wanted to proceed with the next RFT on A seventy four.
Yeah. So again, not a lot to add from the.
Sorry, Megan.
Oh, sorry.
Gather, Council Berkeley.
Oh, great. Sorry. We'll wait for her.
Thank you.
Let her back in. Okay. Can we proceed then?
Yeah. So again, fourteen seventy eight seventy four, not a lot to add from the, the initial introduction. Yeah, I guess at this point, if there's any questions, but nothing really to add to the, to the information.
I, I do like the side of the very specifically some landscaping to separate the residential areas and, you know, and I, I see at the back of that lot, there's some right away, I believe too, that could be maybe tied into it. But anyway, some landscaping would look. I'm sure be appealing to the residential area. I'm sure the develop, development permit. People will do that. Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion to give this second reading?
I so move your worship that we give by law fourteen seventy eight seventy three or eighty seventy four, second reading, please. Eighty seven three.
Thank you, Council Real.
My apologies.
Seventy four. Any further discussion?
Yes. Thank you, worship to, to Director Jakes. Just point of clarification in the bylaw, you've added those two, two sections around landscaping and screening. Will that also be reiterated at the development permit stage? And by that, I mean, will it be prescriptive or will the proponent have to submit a landscape management plan?
So typically we would require a landscaping plan to be submitted. And then that would accompany the, the materials that'll come forward to MPC. And they can determine if they feel what is submitted is suitable, or if they would like to see more, more in the way of screening. At that point with the development permit, you'll have a better sense of the specific operations and, and things going on on the site as well.
Thank you, Director Jenkins.
Counselor Bates? Yes, just to comment with the proposed use being welding fabrication, I would hope that we would reinforce and, and, and watch the noise being a concern. Thank you.
Typically, Megan, our sound bylaw pretty much states what's, what's allowed.
And that's one of the things with this being remaining a commercial district that the, the noise bylaw applies where industrial properties are actually exempt from that noise bylaw. And we also have a similar on the permit for AgroCorp. There are again hours restricting when, when work that creates excessive noise is permitted. I believe it's ten. Needs to be quiet between the hours of ten PM and seven AM Monday to Saturday and ten PM to nine AM on Sundays is what, what the restriction is for AgroCorp.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, is someone prepared to make, give this third and final reading?
I move your worship that we give third and final reading to by law fourteen seventy dash A seven four.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Last discussion. I think all in favor of the motion? Carrie. Okay, thank you. We want to delegations. We have Erin Rolston here to make a presentation. And I believe she's Zoom.
Yes, hello.
Hi, Erin.
Hello, your worship.
Actually, before you have Erin, cut in your worship. I think, Erica, would you mind just opening up council's direction to proceed?
Okay.
Yes, and just set her up. Give us a way and she can carry us through.
Thanks, Eric.
Sure. Hi. So back in August, council approved us going forward with a citizen perspective survey that was going to be conducted by Ipsos. They they developed, it was a telephone survey that they went between August thirteenth and twenty ninth, and they reached out and managed to meet two hundred and fifty three of our residents and asked a bunch of questions. So Erin is here today through Zoom to, to give us those results. So we're very happy that Erin's here today.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, your worship and counselors. I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, to Kim Kowalczuk and Erica Vickers. We manage this process along with us at Ipsos. And we're really excited to give you some benchmark figures. Now, you haven't done a lot of this survey type research in the past, and so this will give you some measurements that you can you know, measure your progress over time. So it's exciting. And it's very timely given, of course, our municipal elections in a week. And I will share my screen and just maybe to confirm, can somebody tell me if you can see the screen all right?
It looks good, Erin.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. So I'll just briefly go over what the objectives of the survey were and how we collected the data. There is a summary of the survey results in the detailed report, so you can read those at your leisure. But we will cover details concerning what priorities are facing the municipality, how residents feel about their quality of life. We did an assessment of the town's programs and services. We have some questions about taxation. We also did some assessments of customer service and communications. And we also evaluated the town's performance, including administration and council. So with no further ado, we will get into this and I please, I, I can't see the room as well with my presentation on my screen. So please speak up if you have a question. I'd be happy to take questions or comments along the way. Um, so you saw the topics that we included in our objectives for the survey. And another objective was to be able to compare the town of Innisfail's results to other similar municipalities. We do a lot of work with municipalities across Western Canada. And we are able to, to provide you with some comparisons. So you can see where you're doing vis a vis other municipalities. So I have some of those measurements to show you as well today. And like Erica said, we did collect the data via telephone. And it was August thirteenth to August twenty ninth. So these surveys are always just a snapshot during that timeframe. We thought the survey would just be about fifteen minutes. But the, the residents certainly had a lot to share and the average interview duration was actually twenty four minutes. So you know, we say a big thank you to the residents who did participate and share their time. The survey was conducted using both landline telephone numbers and cellphone telephone numbers. As Erica mentioned, there's two hundred and fifty three completed surveys. And that results in a margin of error of six point one percent nineteen times out of twenty. So very statistically valid. So we'll move on to the municipal issue agenda. And this is a question that we ask upfront in the survey. So they're not tainted by any of the other kind of directed questions that we ask. And the respondents are allowed to answer in their own words. We take those responses and we code them into like-minded themes. And we see these as the results. So each municipality has its own unique list of key themes on the, on the issue agenda. Here we see the economy, which includes revitalizing the economy, more shops and businesses, job creation. And that's followed by crime, safety and policing. And primarily they want to see increased policing and some concerns about public safety. And next we move on to roads and infrastructure, and this includes maintenance and construction of roads. Some mentions of ineffective government or leadership. Some saying that we need to focus on recreation and sports facilities. Healthcare being another one, population growth, senior services, taxes, youth activities, green spaces and the cost of utilities. And that rounds out the list of responses. And again, every municipality is different. So for example, at the time we were doing the town of Canmore, they had a big development up for debate and growth and development was their number one issue. In Lethbridge, there was debate about the safe injection site. So that was the number one issue. Calgary, roads and infrastructure with the big ring road projects and bridges. But here we're going to see a theme of economy throughout the presentation today. So the economy is definitely on residents' minds. The next set of questions were about the quality of life in the town of Innisfail. Here we get very strong ratings. Ninety seven percent of residents say it's either very good or good. That compares to ninety five percent in the norms that we have. And the norms are based on, I believe it's about twenty five municipalities here in Western Canada, large and small included. So very comparable to the norms, even two points higher and very strong scores. So people are very happy with their quality of life. And then we asked about the perceived change in the quality of life in the town over the past three years. And we have twenty one percent who say it's improved, fifty four who say it stayed the same, and twenty two who say it has worsened. Seems that the residents in the town of Innisfail feel that they're less likely to feel it has worsened in comparison to other municipalities. We've seen that worsen number grow during COVID in comparison to pre-COVID measures. So we do expect that to turn around a little bit, but it looks like the town of Innisfail is actually. So we do expect that to turn around a little bit, but it looks like the town of Innisfail is actually doing better than what we're seeing in some other municipalities. We also asked a series of statements about the quality of life in the town. And we asked residents to agree or disagree with each statement. And you can see that some of the agreement levels are extremely high. Ninety six percent agree that Innisfail is a great place to make a life. Ninety three percent agree that I am proud to be a resident of Innisfail. Eighty two percent agree that the town of Innisfail fosters a town that is inclusive and accepting of all. Seventy four percent agree that Innisfail is moving in the right direction to ensure a high quality of life for future generations. And then just over two thirds agree that Innisfail is a great place to make a living. Again, a little bit lower, and we saw economy as the number one issue on the agenda. So. That comes out again here. And sixty two percent agree that they are regularly involved in neighborhood and community events. This is actually higher than. Particularly what we see here in Calgary. So they're engaged. And then. What about safety? Eighty four percent feel safe, whether that be very safe or reasonably safe. And that compares to ninety three percent. When we look at our norms. So that is a little bit lower. And again, we saw. Crime, safety and policing is the number two issue on the issue agenda. So again, just kind of reiterating that as a priority for the municipality. And then we asked if. They felt crime in Innisfail in the past three years had increased, stayed the same or decreased. You can see here that forty five percent feel that it has increased. Forty three percent say stayed the same. Nine percent say decreased. Again, I'm not sure what the actual stats are, if you have access to them. But it would. Would be interesting to compare the perception versus the reality. We also asked them, would you like to see the population of Innisfail grow quickly? Twelve percent grow slowly, sixty nine percent. Or stay the same sixteen percent or decrease two percent. So overall, you can see that residents do want the population to grow in the town. But they want it to be. A little more cautious than bold in terms of the growth pattern itself. So then we look at the importance and satisfaction of various town programs and services. And we worked with the project team to develop a. A detailed list of those programs and services, which we'll take a look at in just a moment. But we first asked an overall satisfaction question. And here we have very solid measurement of eighty three percent who are satisfied. Little bit lower than than our norms, but that's still extremely good. So we can look at the specific programs and services and see how we're doing there. The first thing we'll do is look at importance. And as you all well know, everything is important to residents. So you'll see these numbers. As quite high. And I'll draw your eye maybe to to look at the difference between the very important and the somewhat important. When when you're looking at these numbers. And this is the first slide ranking the highest, most important. Programs and services provided by the town. Of course, first here on the list is fire services. Snow removal, police services from the RCMP. Parks, playgrounds and open spaces, roads, including pothole repairs. Water and wastewater services, garbage and recycling. Sidewalks, trails and pathways, recreation programs. And economic development. So all of those important. And then next in the rankings. We have municipal bylaws and enforcement. Recreation facilities, access to social support services, town growth management. Town communications, development, building permits and inspections. And support for community events, animal control and the town website at the bottom. So how satisfied are they with all of those programs and services? Well, the satisfaction scores are actually quite strong. Satisfaction with fire services is at ninety nine percent. Ninety three percent for garbage and recycling. Ninety one percent for parks, playgrounds and open spaces. Ninety percent for support for community events. Eighty eight percent for snow removal. Eighty eight percent for recreation facilities. As well as for roads, including pothole and repairs. And also eighty eight percent for sidewalks, trails and pathways. And then eighty six percent for development, building permits and inspections. So these numbers as benchmarks. Really can't go that much higher. So one of the things that you can also track over time. Is have we moved the very satisfied bar? Because that's where you can start seeing some differences as well. Next on the satisfaction rankings is eighty five percent for water and wastewater services. Eighty five percent as well for police services. And also for recreation programs. Eighty three percent for animal control, eighty one percent for municipal bylaws. Eighty one percent for access to social support services. Seventy nine percent for town growth management. Seventy eight percent for the town website. Seventy six percent for town communications. And seventy three percent for economic development, again, of course, being the number one issue. Facing the community today. According to residents, of course. So what what we can do is is take the importance ratings. And pit them against satisfaction ratings. To see where maybe we're exceeding or meeting expectations. Which is our quadrant there that's called primary strengths. And also where maybe we're not quite meeting expectations and we have some opportunities for improvement, which is that red upper left hand quadrant. So that whole top part is really where we can focus because we want to maintain those strengths. So we want to know what they are, and you have many. So fire services. Being the strongest one. Parks, playgrounds and open spaces. Garbage and recycling, recreation facilities, sidewalks, trails and pathways. Roads and snow removal. Those are all primary strengths, which is fantastic. And then there's four areas that are in the primary opportunity. Sorry, five. Three of them actually set right on the cusp of being an opportunity. And a strength. So police services by the RCMP because it's so important, but satisfaction's a little bit lower. Water and wastewater services, very important. And the other one that's on the cusp is recreation programs. And of course, we haven't had. A lot of that during our COVID nineteen experience. The other opportunities for improvement would rest with municipal bylaws and enforcement. And of course, again, with that same theme with economic development. And the other ones are less important. And are not really a cause for concern or maybe not considered to be. One of the most important priorities. Another measure that we do is ask residents about should we invest more, less or the same amount on this program or service? As you know, we we move into this last week before the municipal election. Town council will have various types of input. In order to make some decisions and and this is just one of them. So it can help inform some decisions. So when we're looking at investments, we're looking at. Economic development being. The highest on the list for more investment. Again, you can see the consistency of this theme coming through from the residents. Police services as well, and again, a consistent theme. Recreation facilities and programs are next on the list for more investment. And access to social support services. Sidewalks, trails and pathways. Roads, town communications, growth management and snow removal. So. It's really these top four. That that are the priority areas because really the majority of residents are saying, oh, keep it the same for these other ones. Of course, there is a secondary list. And here, these are all majority saying keep investment the same for these. And that's parks, playgrounds and open spaces, bylaws, fire, the website. Water, animal control, garbage and recycling. Support for community events and development and building permits and inspections. So the top ones again back here are the real priorities. And of course, throughout the report, you can see that theme of economic development and policing come through. So let's now look at taxation. And we do have some numbers in here that we have some norms for as well. One of our common questions is the perceived value for tax dollars that that they spent. Eighty five percent say good value. That's four points higher than our norms of eighty one percent. So residents really do feel like they're getting good value. Over time, we'd like to see that twenty three percent of very good value, maybe, you know, work on moving that up a little bit. As we have sixty two percent in fairly good value. So they're very happy and happier than definitely in some other municipalities that that we've worked with. So in order to balance taxation and service delivery levels. We ask respondents to choose which approach they would like the municipality to take. Should they increase taxes beyond current inflation rate to expand services? Eight percent say yes. Or should they increase taxes at the current inflation rate to maintain services at current levels? Fifty five percent say yes. Or should we cut services to maintain the current tax level? Twenty two percent say yes. Or should we cut services further to reduce taxes? Eight percent say yes. So overall, you've got sixty three percent in favor of increasing taxes. Although we know it's at the current inflation rate, much more than beyond the current inflation rate. But they don't all agree. I mean, thirty percent say we should cut services. When we look at our norms. The town of Innisfail's residents are more inclined to say increase taxes than in other municipalities. And they're also happier with the the value for tax dollars that they feel that they receive. So the next set of questions is about customer service and communications. So we had fifty five percent of your residents say that they had. Dealt with the town or one of its employees in the last twelve months. That's a little bit higher than what our norms are at fifty one percent, but still fair, you know, fairly similar. And how satisfied are they? Eighty percent are satisfied with the customer service provided by the town. Fifty two percent are very satisfied. So that's a fantastic score. And again, similar to our norms at eighty three percent. So the most recent time they contacted the town. Residents did it by visiting a town officer facility or phoning the town. They are actually. You know, wanting that kind of in person interaction and direct contact. You'll see only thirteen percent via email, eleven percent via the website. And of course, the website was one of the lowest in importance. To the residents and in in relation to the other programs and services that the town provides. And it's because, you know, they'd rather actually just talk to somebody than get their information online. Four percent have contacted the town in writing through the mail and two percent through the town's Facebook account. So then we had them once again agree or disagree with a series of statements. About town service delivery. And again, I have some norms here for you. And the town of Innisfail does very well against the norms and has some pretty solid scores in here. At the top of the list is town staff are courteous, helpful and knowledgeable. Ninety three percent agree. Three points higher than the norms. The quality of service from the town is consistently high. Eighty six percent agree. That's significantly higher by eight points from the norms. The town of Innisfail meets my customer service expectations. Eighty five percent agree. And they don't have a norm for that. The town responds quickly to requests and concerns. Eighty five percent agree. Three points higher than the norms. The town of Innisfail practices open and accessible government. Seventy eight percent agree, which is very similar to the norms of seventy seven. And the town allows citizens to have meaningful input into decision making. Seventy one percent agree. Four points higher than our norms. So very positive, positive results. So how do they get their information about the town of Innisfail's programs and services? Primarily through the newspaper at thirty eight percent. And also via social media at twenty one percent. Town newsletter at eighteen percent, town website at thirteen percent. Or they're contacting someone at the town directly at three percent. So the one thing to point out here is that. Whatever content they're getting via newspaper and social media. I mean, unless it's the town's social media, of course. It's it's not controlled. The message and the content isn't controlled by the town. You can control the message and content, of course, through your own social media, the town newsletter and the website. So yeah, that newspaper is a bit higher than what we see in other municipalities. So we also asked about satisfaction with town information and communications. Eighty three percent are satisfied, which is six points higher than our norms. So extremely well done. And then specifically twenty nine percent are very satisfied and fifty four are somewhat satisfied. And we're almost done. I just have a few more measures for you on the town performance of the municipal government. So trust. Trust in government. Is an emerging. Priority to measure for for a lot of municipalities that we're looking at. As a benchmark, fifty five percent trust the town of Innisfail. The most recent number from the city of Calgary, for example, that has been publicly released is fifty percent. So. If you're comparing it against that, you're certainly doing better. And then you've got twenty eight percent in the neutral zone. And just seventeen percent who distrust. And then lastly, we looked at the performance. Of the town of Innisfail, including everyone, council and administration. And we had seventy three percent who said that they were satisfied. Little bit lower than our norms at seventy nine percent. But then we broke it out by asking them to think specifically of town administration excluding town council. And eighty two percent were satisfied, very similar to the norms at eighty one percent. And we also asked about town council excluding town administration. And we had sixty eight percent satisfaction. A little bit lower than the norms at seventy three. But, for example, city of Calgary's most recent number was sixty one. So it's still pretty solid and. Fairly on par with with what what we see in other municipalities. And this type of pattern between. Administration and council is also quite typical. And then lastly, just to point out, your report also contains demographic. Data related to the the makeup of respondents. And so if you wanted to flip through for that type of demographic information, it is included in the report here. And. You can. Yeah, you can dig into the data even more. I know Ken is. An expert statistician. So. Happy to take any questions, go back to any slides that you. an expert statistician. So I'm happy to take any questions, go back to any slides that you'd like to review.
Well, I, very interesting. A little disappointed in some of the numbers, but generally, it's, you know, it's quite a cross. Aaron, how many people were actually surveyed in this situation?
Two hundred and fifty-three. And it's important to have enough for statistical validity when we calculate the margin of error. So that that's very comparable to what we see and we do. We actually left it in the data collection period for a little bit longer because we were trying to boost that number a little bit. But like, for example, Red Deer does three hundred, Kenmore does three hundred, Banff does three hundred. So it's very comparable to what we see in other smaller municipalities.
Any questions?
Your worship through to Aaron. It's Council Barclay. I'm just curious. First time we've ever done this, so it's very interesting and certainly sets a benchmark. Using this data moving forward, how how do you see that working or maybe through to CEO Becker? Like, you know, would you set goals in each category and say, we'd like to increase two percent, four percent, whatever it might be? And, you know, I know recently in the last few months and kind of got underway in the last six weeks as an economic development task force. I think we've recognized the fact that, you know, that's been something that's been rather absent from from the town of Innisville for several years is a real focus on that. So how do we, how do we measure our performance going forward or set benchmarks going forward?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Barclay. Different municipalities do take different approaches in that respect. Some do set goals, key performance measures, so to speak. And some just want to see consistent improvement without setting an actual number. I think that this can be used as one input. I know that there's a multitude of resources that council and administration have to integrate into decision makings for the town. It's almost like a pulse check of residents. And again, in that space of time, that was done in late August. So in terms of developing those performance measures, those goals, you know, I can't speak on your behalf that way. Some do, but it's it's quite subjective with the number that you choose. You might want to say that you could use the norms as a goal. If twenty-five other municipalities here in Western Canada are hitting those numbers on average, maybe that could be a potential target for the town of Innisville. I mean, you've already exceeded some of them. But there are a couple that are a little bit lower. And you could potentially use those norms as as your goal.
Counselor Bates?
Yes, this is Gavin Bates. I'm on council. I guess I was one of the random lucky people to be surveyed. One out of two hundred and fifty-three. I was curious. When you, when you achieve your demographics, did you just keep asking until you felt you got enough people of the age groups, et cetera, that you were looking for? Or did you just go to the number of two hundred and fifty odd?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Bates. It's a good one. What we do is we look up the actual demographic of the population of the town of Innisville, eighteen and older, because we don't interview anyone under the age of eighteen ethically. We look at the statistics by age and by gender. So males aged eighteen to thirty-four, females aged eighteen to thirty-four, et cetera, into these these age categories. So what we try and do is actually do that exact number of interviews in those buckets so that it is representative of the population. If we do have, you know, oversampled, you know, males over the age of fifty-five, we apply statistical weights to the data so that it is reflective of the actual population according to the latest census data. Does that help?
Sure. Yes, thank you. And then maybe in the analytic, slide thirty-five was the communication channels. I don't know if we could retrieve that. Maybe I hit the wrong thirty-five.
Communication channels. I'll find it for you here.
It was by percentage. Yes, we don't get a hundred percent here. We get a hundred and thirty percent. So I'm not sure if there's some.
Right. So I I put a little label box down at the bottom. They were, they were allowed to give more than one response.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilor Harrison. Thank you. You worship and through to Aaron. Yeah, a great report. I just, one question around economic development. You heard earlier that we've just began with the new Economic Development Task Force here in its infancy. Did you get into any detail or ask any questions around economic development means different things to different people? I was just wondering if there was any sort of follow-up. They said we need economic development. Did you follow up with any follow-up questions as, do you have any ideas?
Sure. So there's two things that I can offer you on that. And it is definitely an important issue. I mean, we saw that in multiple places in the report. So one of the things that I have for the codes in the issue agenda is that they were talking about revitalizing the economy. They wanted more shops and businesses established and job creation. Now, these are codes based on actual responses. So what I can do for you is look at those actual responses. I actually have a file of them to see if we can generate some more specific detail for you.
Okay, thank you. Will that data be available for our administration here?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Aaron, Jim remain here, Aaron. I guess the one, the one thing that I I'm wrestling with in my mind is this pandemic, the effects of this pandemic on on everyone and the whole community, on council, on staff and everything else. And it seems to me it's a, it's a probably not a good time after a year and a half of what we've been experiencing. But there's been so many outside, I guess, pulling things apart that that we've had to deal with in this last eighteen months that, you know, I can, I can see where things like trust and other things that are have have deteriorated a bit because of the, you know, influences that we've had to deal with. But would you agree, I think, Aaron, that it is, I think, I, it's in a sense, it's a very effective part of, I think, the impact of this survey.
Thank you, your worship. Absolutely. I think that is an extremely valid comment. We have seen ratings go down for quality of life during the pandemic. We've done work on the pandemic itself. And in times of crisis, citizens look to their governments more than ever for timely, effective communications. So we've also seen the poor communicators being impacted by by it as well. Effect on the quality of life. And just, you know, it's, it's the unknown. And it it does cause a little bit of fear, which is why we have seen our trust numbers go down as well. Absolutely.
It's been interesting to see this survey done three years ago now. But anyways, maybe you can do it again in a couple of years.
Yeah, and congratulations to all of you for taking the initiative to do it and have citizen input, you know, under your, under your belt as as you move forward.
Okay, any other questions of council? CEO Becker, have you got anything?
More thoughts, your worship, on Council Barclay's question on how do you use this? And I think it allows council onto administration to take a deeper dive into these respective areas. You know, council made it a agenda item for the economy based on your, probably your campaign for your election last, the election, you're hearing economy. So they moved a few things forward, now developing a task force. There's a few other initiatives. The crime city policing is also identified as a current issue. I think we agree that there's, there's been a movement of different levels of crime. We're seeing that maybe crime rates and number has dropped. But what are those crimes that are being committed seem to be significant, some of the levels of crime. But council responded with that, with again, engaging the community with the police sensitive communities committee. But some of these initiatives are just getting ground. I think it requires more attention, more discussion to actually set tactics or more actions associated with these, with these issues. So even roads and infrastructure, new council will hear this conversation with asset management. So my point, I guess, would be to utilize information to really do a deeper dive. Is this what we're hearing in the community? Is this accurate? Confirm it and potentially develop a strategic plan associated with some of this data. I like the idea of using KPIs, key performance indicators. It creates targets. Is, are we achieving? So if it's next year, two years, what is that number? So public trust, you know, that's a number that's kind of, I think, we're keep focus on. That's, that's, that's almost like my high school grades. We can do better than that. So, but how do we do that? So how do we communicate to our community to help foster a perceived or a feeling of trust with 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 the town in this case? And it's so doable. But what do we need to do to raise that number? What is that target number? You know, is it sixty-five percent in two years? Like, set the number and how do we get to that number? So to me, this is a very useful tool for new council to really get a grasp of what is, what is going on in a community based on a really diverse set of demographics that have participated with this process. So thanks for the opportunity to speak to us.
All right, is there no further questions? Aaron, I guess, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome, your worship. And if if I may just respond quickly to that last comment. Not all municipality municipalities are measuring trust, but more and more are. We have done some deeper dives into trust. And some of the factors, our appropriate tax dollar spending, in the case of Calgary, council infighting, closed-door sessions and transparency, and perceptions that even if you hold an open house and collect citizen input, it's for show and not being used in a meaningful way. I don't know if that helps at all, but those were some of the factors that that we have done a bit of a deeper dive on.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be some, some follow-up on this, on this report by the new council. They can hopefully shed some further light on responses. Yes, Counselor Hill.
Yes, your worship, just to Aaron, just a little bit of background. I was meaning to ask this question earlier. Obviously, municipalities, are they doing this on a every two years? Like, how, like, obviously, we want to be able to benchmark and and find out where we are now and build that data so we can actually have comparables. How often is other municipalities doing something like this? Obviously, you referenced Calgary, but smaller municipalities, what's, what's kind of common practice with conducting these surveys?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. I'd say that if I'm looking at Banff, if I'm looking at Kenmore, Pinoka, Hinton, Lethbridge, they are on about a three-year cycle or have been. But they're starting to think that maybe they should do it every second year according to the four-year election period.
Thank you.
And Calgary does it twice a year.
Okay, I think CEO Becker has a question.
Just to, to council, we do have a raised hand virtually, if you're, if you're taking questions or not. But somebody wishes to speak to either you, council, or to to Aaron. I'm unsure which.
That fine? Yes. Okay. Yeah. No, no. Okay.
Hello. Yes, Bill Hoppins here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond. My suggestion to the next council and to Todd is that you take this information as part of your formally articulated planning and reporting process of which budgeting is part. I know in the educational world, school boards build their plans over three or four years of their mandate. And every second year, collecting this survey data does help them with their key performance indicators. So the survey results are not standalone things. They're integrated into the planning, which reflects your priorities. So I'm not aware of what your planning and reporting cycles are. I know you have a financial one, but the financial one in the education world's folded into planning and reported that takes in all the operations, not just financial. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Bill. Okay, well, is there any further questions? I guess we'll thank you, Aaron, very much for the information. It'll be well put, put to use and scrutinized and by our future council. And gives them a starting point to work with. I'm sure there's things there they'd like to improve on. But it's, it's been a challenge for this past council with this COVID thing, really. But anyways, we've had our hands full. We've gotten through the majority of it, so. But thank you, Aaron, for your presentation.
Thank you, your worship and counselors, for letting me spend this time with you today. And I will follow up with Ken on the matters that we discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussions or comments before we wrap up on that one?
Just thank you, council. Not, not all councils will want to open, open that door and take a peek in and have that level of transparency. So commend you to show that bravery to, to go a little deeper as you, as you exit your chairs. So certainly, there is opportunity to use this information in planning as per Mr. Hoppins's comments. Once your council has done your conversation, it should be appropriate to accept this report as information.
Okay. Would someone like to show move that?
Your worship, I would move that we accept the delegation's information as information.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Further discussion, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right, did you want to do an introduction this next?
Sure, absolutely, your worship. Just going to introduce our next delegation. All three delegates are more than welcome to come up. We'll set you up at the hot seat there. I'd like to introduce ours, Reimer, Mary Fleming, and Cindy Dunbar. About some comments, questions, perhaps, just regarding the current restrictions program.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the last council meeting that you're holding as a town council. I wrote up my thoughts. Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council and fellow Innisfailians. I'm convinced that each and every one of you cares about this town and its citizens, or you wouldn't be in the position you are today. I've requested this delegation to be able to appear before you, this council at this meeting because of concerns that I have, and I have expressed in emails with a little response from yourselves. I appreciate that you have a full schedule, so myself and my delegation will be brief with their presentation. The province has given power to the municipalities to decide how to implement the restrictions exemption program or vaccine passports at their public facilities. Our council was voted in by citizens and our understanding is that you haven't had a chance or much time to discuss or look at all variables before decisions are made that affect all town residents. Regarding the COVID vaccine, it's an experimental gene modifying injection. It creates antibodies for the person who receives the jab so their body can fight the virus easier. It's about improving protection for the person. This vaccine does not create herd immunity. It's a therapy designed to protect the person taking it so they have less severe symptoms. It does not prevent infection or transmission. I'll briefly share a few stats with you. September 21st, 2020, not one Alberton has been vaccinated. New COVID cases, 358, total active cases, 1,458. Hospitalizations, 51, ICU nine. September 21st, 2021, 72.8% of eligible Albertons fully vaccinated. Approximately 83% have had one dose. New cases, 1,519, total active cases, 20,917. Hospitalizations, 99 in ICU, 222. There are 14 times the active cases and 20 times the hospitalizations in one year. People, including our government officials blame this on the 17% of unvaccinated population. For the first time ever, a medicine's ineffectiveness is being blamed on those who haven't taken it. Perhaps instead the vaccines are not working. The variants have mutated much quicker than we can roll out vaccines for the current variant. The vaccines people are taking today are prevention of the first alpha variants. We are now onto the delta variant. If vaccinated people can still get infected and pass on COVID, why are they getting a free pass to the town's facilities and the unvaccinated are required to be tested? Paying anywhere from $30 to $60 for a test that's only good for 72 hours. The vaccinated should be also tested if the ultimate goal is for everyone's safety. The unvaccinated have been called selfish and uneducated. However, I would ask you to consider very carefully why some would choose not to take the vaccines being offered for COVID before judging them. Here are a few, certainly not all of the reasons. Some have natural immunity already. Religious reasons, adverse reactions to previous vaccines or the first jab. Autoimmune reasons, terminal illness, zero liability for the pharmaceutical companies that put out the vaccine. No long term testing done on the vaccines. This pandemic should actually be called the pandemic of the undertreated. Early therapeutics have been denied to patients. I'm concerned that here in Innisfail, we have town counselors who say one thing and then do another. June of 2020, we all remember it well. We are inundated with bad press surrounding Black Lives Matter. A few of you even received death threats. Despite the protective measures placed on the community, a rally was held. Some of you spoke at the rally and took a knee. Promising Innisfail would be inclusive and welcoming, and yet a year and a half later, you have divided this community into two and divisively are treating one group of citizens different than another group, the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated. Listening to the candidate forum, you have pleaded that you must implement the restriction exemption program at the town facilities because it's provincially mandated, mandated. And the provincial authorities are the experts and they know best. I question whether your decisions are financially or fear motivated. Looking closer at government policies, they're not about reducing risk of transmission of COVID-19, but about government coercion. Please take time to look at all the information available, discuss and make fair inclusive decisions for all Innisfail citizens. We have headed down a slippery slope. I will end with a quote from Benjamin Franklin. Those who are willing to give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. Thank you.
Okay. Hi.
Good afternoon, Mayor, town counselors and town administration. Thank you for allowing us to come. So how does this affect residents of Innisfail? Specifically at the aquatic center and possibly the arena. I have lived in this town for 14 years, raising a family. We chose this location for its size and for its amenities. I've spoken to numerous families in town who share the same concerns as I am bringing up today. Our family uses these facilities constantly. Kids are involved in dolphins for the past eight years. There's water polo Innisfail skating club. We also attend public swim skate regularly. It's a big reason why we love this town. I received notice on September 24th from the president of my daughter's water polo club that I can no longer go into the aquatic center without showing proof of my personal vaccine status or providing them with a negative test or exemption. The club requires volunteers and parents genuinely want to be involved in their children's sports. I understand and respect the request to limit spectators in general. There is a necessary balance between freedom and public good, but allowing some and not others is not okay. It's unconstitutional. Consider a senior resident I know very well for whom exercise is vitally important for her health. She is COVID recovered with natural immunity. Now that winter is approaching, it is not safe for her to walk outside. She has always used the pool in order to manage her health condition during the long winter months. As a healthy senior citizen, she is now not permitted into the facility without paying for tests out of her pension money. I'm sure she's not the only one. Can we be creative in how these residents can be served and not excluded? Their health is also on the line. And what about the arena? Is it going to follow suit? The possibility, this possibility was discussed at last week's Innisfail skating club board meeting. If the restrictions exemption program was implemented at the arena, this Innisfail skating club would be unable to run, period. I ventured to say that with all the parent volunteers required to run minor hockey, that they would be hard hit as well. Currently in the arena, ice surface and spectator areas are more than adequate to allow sufficient spacing and distancing. Health checks at the door ensure that anyone with symptoms is not permitted entry. How was the decision made to implement the restrictions exemption program at the pool by our elected mayor and council or someone else at the town who is consulted? More importantly, what is the town's ultimate goal in implementing the R E P? I want to believe that it was not your intent to segregate citizens of Innisfail into us and them, but this is precisely what has been done. Is this really the best tool to meet the need of safety within, within the facility? If the goal is to ensure only healthy people in town facilities, there are alternatives that can be considered. Is the R E P at the aquatic center a temporary measure for a few weeks or months until numbers go down? When will it be reviewed and how? What model is in place to track progress and perhaps adverse effects on the citizens of Innisfail? We all have given up rights and freedoms over the past year and a half. During a pandemic, governments override certain rights and freedoms for a time in the interest of protecting the public good. We have all been doing that for 19 months. But what happens if for a time is not monitored? And invasive measures become a regular part of life? Then we no longer live in a free country and we may no longer live in a free town. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors for allowing us to be here. Failed lockdowns, a COVID-19 pandemic reopening plan going forward after 19 months. Paul Elias Alexander, PhD researcher, McMaster University, Hamilton, Ontario. According to the American Institute for Economic Research, the cost of the COVID-19 pandemic restrictive policies over the last 19 months have been staggering in terms of damage to mental health, especially of our children. I have six grandchildren. Believe me, I do see it. Rise in hunger and poverty crushing effects on economies, the loss of education and the escalated costs to healthcare, et cetera. Going forward, a summary in 10 points. One, no one size fits all approach. Use an age risk focus strategy, strong and acute protections of the elderly and vulnerable persons. And yes, we have been doing this. Two, focus on healthy lifestyles, nutrition, exercise, improved hygiene and daily living for all age groups, especially children. I'm referring to the particularly nutrition and exercise. Three, no isolation quarantine of asymptomatic persons. Four, no school closures, no university closures, no lockdowns whatsoever. Open society fully, the crushing harms and devastation from lockdowns, especially on children outweigh any benefit. Five, those advocating for vaccinations must also have risks on the table. That is our pharmaceutical companies and governments who have the power to protect these companies. No liability equates to no trust by the thinking population. Pharmaceutical companies must have quote, skin in the game, unquote, and be liable if there is harm as a result of the vaccinations. Six vaccine developers must immediately implement proper safety surveillance systems for these vaccines. Dr. Jay Bhattachara, professor at Stanford University Medical School. He's a physician, epidemiologist, health economist and public health policy expert has publicly stated that he believes anyone under 30 years of age should not get the vaccine. Seven, no vaccine passports, no immunity or antibody passport as these mandates constrain the rights of citizens under the questionable guise of safety. Eight, do not vaccinate persons who have active infection or who have recovered from the infection. In other words, cease the illogical absurdity that the COVID-19 vaccine immunity is superior to naturally acquired immunity. Nine, above all, unshackle the children. Allow them to play freely outside with their friends, to live naturally within every environment. So their immune systems are challenged by mingling and socially interacting. The risk to children is near zero and it is important not to weaken their developing immune systems. 10, governments need to broaden the advisement groups. Allow other scientists and laypersons a seat at the table. We need different perspectives and an open discussion with multiple ideas and viewpoints. We need critical thinking. In closing, let me remind you that liberty is not got by simple proclamation. It is the creation of civilization and heroic exertions by a few brave souls. That Samuel Adams, American statesman, he lived in 1743 to 1803 and seems like nothing much has changed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
In standing for our rights and freedoms, we are serving you, our town council, our elected officials, each with a notice of liability. And in there it gives a lot of information, a lot of what we've already spoken about. I'm sorry, I didn't have a presentation in to present on, for best for Jim Romaine. This is Jean Barkley. These are notice of liability for elected appointed officials. Without a mask. You can go with a mask. Okay, for Gavin Bates, Don Harrison and Dan Ryber. Thank you very much for your time. Know that you didn't have much today, so thank you. We do really appreciate you letting us come. Yes. We are the few brave souls. Do you have questions?
I don't think, has anybody got any questions? I certainly understood where you were coming from, Iris.
Thank you.
I think that wasn't, certainly wasn't a question in my mind. You know, not much I can say other than we've been, we've been trying to rely on, on expert supposedly that are being consulted with the government and people that are making these calls, but kind of this council has taken the direction to follow the rules, follow the the laws as being passed down to us and it's been tough.
We just think they haven't.
Pardon me?
We believe that federal services and the government have not had balance in any of their discussions. One narrow, straight, polluting path. They're destroying us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your, your worship, I just would like to say thank you very much for bringing this forward. I know it's very tough to bring such, yeah, very complex issues forward and it's to bring it forward in a very diplomatic ways, really appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet. Thank you. Okay, I think we'll make note of those comments and you know, consider them in our future discussions.
Your worship, I'd like to request a five minute recess, please.
Okay, all in favor of recess? Five?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we all back? Or back and ready to go get this meeting underway again? First thing on the agenda here is the CEO's report.
Thank you, your worship. Just to be brief, it's, it's really take any questions on this report or anything else regarding some of my things I'm involved with or administration projects, et cetera. Few items there for your attention, obviously a little, little bit of Little bit of fluffy stuff there for you, I just acknowledging. Your four years of hard work as elected official officials in your governance role. Representing administration, just wanted to give you that feedback. Appreciating your support over the four years for myself and the Ministry of Team, and just want to wish you all that are running for. Luck for those that are running for reelection and those that are not wishing you all the well, so. We'll certainly have more, more hugs and high fives at the end of the meeting, but there's a little bit of, little bit affection for you for now, so. Again, certainly take any questions you have on the administration and operations.
Any questions? Doing kudos.
As well have my CEO evaluation coming up in. Make a public record here.
It's been a tough year, Todd. Anyways. All right. I don't think I can say enough, but we'll, we'll talk. And. Behalf of council, I think you're. You're. Very much appreciated, anyways, would someone like to move? Report?
Also move.
CEO's report. All in favor? Carrie, thanks. Control, the council action. Control plan. Is the solid waste up for a renewal coming up?
We just redo the solid weights for two years. We just finalized that.
Okay. The two year.
For two years, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, okay. An emergency generator, Stephen, is that being installed or?
It's on order right now, we're just waiting for it to show up.
Any other questions of that, that plan? Someone like to pass motion we accepted for information?
Also move your worship.
Thank you, Council Berkeley, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. CEO Becker, you have a verbal update on the ECC?
Yes, thanks, your worship, the Emergency Coordination Center continues to meet every Wednesday in the morning. We're going to go back into the business continuity plan that we reviewed just several months ago. As well as the ECC objectives, making sure we're still lined up with a little bit of focus. As you likely would read in the local media, just some research on vaccinations, we're seeing a little bit of an uptake on municipalities. Applying vaccination policies, so we're, we're doing that analysis, research. And how, how is that being rolled out? And so we're doing, I'm doing that research in coordination with ECC. Just a few other points. Work of the ECC, we talk about such things as the election, of course, that's already in play, making sure that we have the proper coverage with the staff knows. That are working the elections, but also the patrons that are visiting the election stations are achieving the restrictions that are. Required by provincial government, not a town instilled policy from the government. We're also reviewing constantly the protocols within our facilities, what I'm hearing is our, we do have a blend of the two. Programs, restrictions, exemption program, or the business capacity and operating restrictions, we do have a little bit of a blend. What I've heard recently is our adult programming at the pool is, is, is high. Which is a good indicator that we are making the best use of, of our facilities. A really strong relationships through, to administration, Megan and her team to maintain a really good relationship with. With minor hockey, figure skating, eagles, old timers, you name it, we have a really strong rapport with, with our users. Which are required through their own associations to apply the restriction programs, the REP, it's really out of our realm, we provide the facility. For the arena, but at the pool, it is a little bit of our programming, and again, we have compliance, we've staff have been respected. Although we had a theory recently, just some, we need to work on a little bit of reminders on protocols for those, those patrons, those people that are visiting the facility, so. Right now, I've not heard of any significant or any. Pushback within our facilities at this kind, so we'll continue to monitor that and continue to update council. Throughout the meetings and in between as required. I think that's really it, and just looking at staff, is there anything else mentioned with ECC, I think that basically covers some of the discussions we've, we've had recently. Oh, just one other thing on the HR side. Just making sure our employees are, are, are protected. So awareness of mental health is, is a conversation we're having as well, making sure mental health is always front and center. That's lined up within our objective, so. That's really it, council, if there's any questions regarding some of the work we're doing, or some of the experience that we've had, we certainly open up for any questions.
Council Berkeley. It's your worship through the CEO Becker, so with the arena, Todd, the RE program is, is that just being implemented by the associations? Like, for example, in a spell minor hockey, is that under REP?
Correct, no, it's not.
Okay. Sorry, Director Jenkins.
So as a youth activity, again, the participants don't have to, so the facility is, is not as a whole operating. Under the REP program. The biggest difference in my mind between the arena and the pool is the. Component of adult users. You know, we're, our second ice surface is just going to come in this week when we'll see the, some more adult user groups start to use it. Right now, we have the, the eagles coming in one evening a week for practices, so. That's why we haven't gone to that REP program across the board that would require. You know, us to be monitoring all the time, monitoring parents for minor hockey, so. During minor hockey, it's the, the third capacity distancing masking protocols.
Your worship through Director Jenkins, so when rec hockey starts and eagle start and things get moving, are you then going to have to implement REP across the facility, or can you still keep it? Separate term?
So it's, it's a bit of a gray at this point, and that's what we're trying to get some more clarity, we think we can. Maintain with just the user groups doing the, the monitoring until we get into a situation where the eagles are having games. Where we're having, you know, larger crowds and spectators coming in. Where with rec hockey and, and the eagles just practicing, it's essentially just the participants that are coming in. They're required to be vaccinated, they're essentially separate from the other users in the facility. The eagles have indicated that they won't be having any home games until the first weekend in December. So we do still have some time to explore what that, that would look like.
Okay, thank you.
Just add, council, I know some comments regarding Drayton Valley, go do a Drayton Valley's doing in Black Falls and. And I pulled their, their data from their website and pointed to you there as well, council. But right now in Drayton Valley, they have, they're using the business capacity operating restrictions, they. They decided to not do the REP program, which means they don't have adult programming within their facilities, so. So we're making. Some adjustments within what we believe is allowable, but certainly can be challenged, but. So we are meeting, if not a little bit maybe serving compared to Drayton Valley. Whereas Black Falls is, is really quite similar, they don't have any in our pool, so it doesn't apply. They have their arena, and again, they're, they're, they're following the restrictions as expected of them. Imposed upon them by the government, so they're not doing anything outside of really what we're doing.
Todd, is there any indication of the term of this, these latest restrictions, is there a? Time or a? Level or a goal that you're? Willing to revisit it?
Your worship, it's a good question, and don't have an answer for that. For some reason, the municipal engagement with Chief Medical Officer was. Did not happen last week, we see one being proposed this coming week, which I've not sent out to you guys. So we'll know more over the next few days, but we're not seeing any, any adjustments at this given time or to the foreseeable future.
Okay, your worship, I believe this afternoon, there was a point of your press conference with Dr. Hinshaw, Premier Kenny and. Jason Copping, the Health Minister, so I don't know whether there's more announcements coming out or what that was about, but probably over by now.
The good news, what I'm seeing anyways, they're seeing, seems to have plateaued at least. That seems to be getting in better, worse, but. So still. Long ways from ideal. Okay. Would someone like to move that we accept the, the CCC report? For information.
I'll make that motion to worship.
Thank you. Council Bates, all in favor of the motion? Carrie? Okay, moving on to. Fortis franchise fee rate. Director Vickers.
Thank you, your worship. So we are bringing this report forward to look for an increase in our franchise fee rate of two percent up to seventeen percent. Pursuant to clause four point A of our franchise agreement with Fortis Alberta, we have the ability to change the franchise fee percentage yearly. This is billed to consumers individually based on distribution charges and calculated at the franchise rate. A letter is sent to each municipality in their service area requesting each councils to confirm their municipal election franchise fee rate, or indicate whether a change is being requested. Franchise fee rates and revenues are reviewed annually prior to each budget cycle, in order for a municipality to increase franchise fees. A motion must be made by council. And then any increases and the resulting impact to customers must be advertised, and a copy of the advertisements. Need to be received by Fortis prior to November first. Fortis will then seek approval from the Alberta, Alberta Utilities Commission for the fee to be effective January first, twenty twenty-two. Franchise fees are designed to be a usage based revenue source. It also gives us the ability to charge for franchise fees to units that do not pay taxes as either renters or tax exempt properties. This customer base includes renters and apartments and multi-units, schools, churches, commercial rentals and federal and provincial governments. By using a franchise fee to generate income from exempt community members, the burden for paying for town services is more equitable. The Alberta Utilities Commission restricts the percentage that can get that, sorry, that can be charged for a franchise fee to twenty percent. Of the revenue earned by delivering electricity. The franchise fee rate charged by municipalities in the Fortis area varies up to the maximum of twenty percent. Our current rate is currently fifteen percent. And I did put a list of similar municipalities and what their percentage is. Now, while council and administration have not yet held twenty twenty-two budget, budget discussions, there are some increases to the twenty twenty-two budget that we are already anticipating. We already know that next year we are going to have to increase the RCMP by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The annual helipad cost, should we go through with that reconstruction, will be an increase of eighty thousand dollars annually to the budget. Staff merit costs will be ninety thousand dollars, that's what it's anticipated. Now, we have not actually received merit costs for the last two years. Another thing up for discussion would be staff cola costs. Staff did not receive cola last year and current cola is sitting at four point one percent. A four point, a four percent cola would cost over two hundred thousand dollars to the budget. Increased carbon tax costs, it's going from forty dollars per ton to fifty dollars per ton, that's an increase of thirty thousand dollars to the budget. Of just that's, that's just on natural gas and. And fuel that, that we can track, that doesn't include all the increases to all the other services that we buy from. Other smaller increases are coming in from many different suppliers, suppliers such as Cape and Alberta One Call. They're all being hit with cost of living increases and increased carbon taxes, and they are passing on those increases to us. So in his sales franchise, franchise fee rate is currently set at fifteen percent. The forecast for the twenty twenty-two franchise fee is estimated to generate. Just over one point four million dollars. If we increase this franchise fee to seventeen percent, it would generate just over one point six million dollars, which is an additional one hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. This would however, cause. The residents to see their, their increase go from ten dollars and eighteen cents to twelve dollars and ten cents, so they would see a one dollar ninety-two cent per month increase. If we increase the franchise fees, this will assist with funds required to manage any of the budgetary shortfalls that we are going to face in twenty twenty-two. This will also contribute to keeping the increases to taxes to a minimum. If we don't increase the franchise fees now, the only way to generate extra income during budget is to raise taxes. Or to cut services. So we are looking, the council approves increasing the twenty twenty-two franchise, franchise fee to seventeen percent.
Well, I guess, is it appropriate for this council to be setting this? Dollar value now, or?
Your worship, I think that's, that's a great question, we did push back on, on Fortis. Acknowledging that some councils are, are not even going to meet again, so how are they expecting this council to move into that decision making? And speak for a budget? Well, you have some indication of what's, what's coming, but it's really not detailed review and analysis. We have no choice, to be honest with you, we need to move it into play. Or, I guess, special meeting of council, but we have to, we have a deadline, we have to achieve based on. On what our franchise fee agreements are demonstrating to us, so. It's not fair of you, council, it certainly has been expressed administratively of, this is not appropriate. However, do we, we do have to achieve the timelines or, or it's going to be maintained at its current balance?
Oh. And our team, do you want, do you want to do a discussion, go around the table? Council Hill?
Yes, your worship, thank you. I guess. For myself, anytime I've looked at a, at a franchise fee. It's great to be able to see that, you know, we can keep our taxes low and, and keep our. I, yeah, basically keep our taxes as low as possible, I see some of the things that we have listed of, of what's going to be coming, like occurring cost to the. Increases to our municipality, and there's some items in there that I, I personally wouldn't be opposed to seeing some, some tax increase for some of those items. Especially when he's talking about the police and potential help or pad. But I do think that this is an opportunity that needs to be thought about. You know, we look at ourselves being still in the middle of the pack compared comparative to other municipalities and. To jump it to two percent, basically a hundred thousand dollars per percent. It would, it doesn't seem, two percent doesn't seem like very much, but two hundred thousand dollars obviously would definitely help our, our community in a time of need with. Not being able to have, we don't really, we can't pick or choose what costs we're going to occur, and we're kind of stuck with these expenses that are coming, being passed down to us. And this would be an option that would potentially. Relieve some of that pressure.
Council Bates?
So I do have a question, seems to me when we visited this last year. One of the utilities. Was in a position to accept the. decision more towards budget time and the other wasn't. And we asked if we could move them both to the situation of when we're in the middle of budget and can really get a grasp on the whole picture and make an important decision like this.
Your worship to the counselor Bates. Yeah. So last year, Fortis did allow us to, to submit something later in the year. They gave us four different dates deadlines that we could do it to. They did not give us that same option again this year. So the deadline is November 1st and we have to run any decision in the newspaper two weeks prior to that as well. So.
Did they give a reason why they?
They did not. Like I could go back to them and see why they did it last year and not again this year. I think last year was just an anomaly.
Okay, well. You know, I'd been the seven-year person of, well, several don't know that. I've only done it for three years. I'm always against raising utilities. Especially at this time when we don't have, and I realize all those things are valid that you presented, but they're going to be increased. But I have a real concern that it's, it's similar to the Parkland Library Foundation. They get out in front and they get their thing approved. And, and then we get into budget deliberations and we're trying to really look at what's, you know, what everybody else is competing for. I and, and the other factor, of course, that I raised last time and will continue to raise it if I'm able is that we, our residents pay GST on this too. And if I look back right now on the GST on the two numbers that are presented here, the current franchise fee is going to generate 1% tax increase that goes to the federal government. If we raise it, it'll be that much more. And I believe GST is going to go up as I look forward as to the federal government tries to figure out how to balance all their problems. So I'm against it for those reasons. And I don't want to leapfrog Olds and Sylvan Lake. So I I'd be against this at this point.
Okay. Counsel Berkeley.
Yeah. I would like us to go back to Fortis and say that we will decide this at an appropriate time like we did last year. I, I think they make a lot of money out of this community and we are their customer. And I think we need to try to drive this boat a little bit rather than Fortis telling us what to do. So I, I would not be in favor of it at this time because as Counsel Bates said, you know, that this belongs as a in budget where we can drill down and, and really determine exactly what we need going forward. And, and I do acknowledge, you know, the expenses that you've shown here, Director Vickers, without question, but I have never liked this coming at this time of year and why they flipped from what they did last year. I, I don't know, but I'd sure like administration to, to find out and, and push back a little bit because I'm sure we're not the only municipality doing that. And maybe it's something that I don't know whether AUMA has to get involved at some point in time and, and start advocating for municipalities that are that are being forced to do this at an inappropriate time every year. Thanks.
Counsel Reber. While I agree that this isn't a good time to try and figure this out before budget. I foresee that with all the other cutbacks and government funding and where are we going to get money from? But I think in a couple of years, this will be a moot point because I believe you're going to be at 20% anyway. So I believe it would be better to move it up incrementally, one or two percent at a time until we get to that 20% because I think that's where we're headed.
Counsel Harrison.
Thank you, worship. I think it's completely unfair of Fortis. They know the budgetary processes, every municipality in Alberta. They go through their budget cycles beginning in November. Albeit it's an election year and I certainly, you know, I think this council needs to, needs to think about it, but at this point I, I would support Counselor Barkley and Counselor Bates. I don't support the increase at this point. I think we go back to Fortis and find out why the, in such a rush, they know our budget cycle hasn't changed in God knows how many years. So I think we, we go back to them and just say that at this point in time, we need, we need deliberations. We're getting increases from many other places and we as a responsible council need to take a look at our overall budget. And this works into it. So that would be my comments. Thank you.
And I, I totally agree because, you know, we, I can't understand Fortis. It's an in and out for them. I mean, it's not that they're trying to figure out what they're doing with some money for more or less money. It's just an in and an out and I can't see the this need for this rush rush right now, but I agree. I don't think until you've had a chance to look at the budget and, and then you go back to your your sources. If you've got a shortfall, you go back to, well, where can we pick up? You know, another hundred thousand dollars or whatever, fine. Start looking at those things, but I think it's premature right now without having a look at your potential budget for 22. CEO Becker.
Great comments, counsel. This is the traditional dates. So just here it's clear. It's good. And just understanding your expectations inquiry to Fortis may not allow you to make adjustments. There's a good chance you'll be maintaining that status quo, just, just so you're aware of that. Certainly doing inquiries likely would be better if council, next council, even this council gets involved with that advocacy piece. Just so you're clear that it'll likely maintain at the current level based on the timing.
So they want it November 1st?
As per typical, except for last year was, was a difference.
Can you have the budget done by November 1st? Yeah, no problem. Okay. Yeah, I, I agree. I see it, but I for the life of me, I don't see why it's our issue. It's it's just a click of a code on the computer to change your franchise fee. I guess I would, I would open it up to the potential for a motion if someone's prepared to make a motion. Now that we've had a little discussion on it. A bit backwards, but is someone prepared to make a motion? The effect of the staff recommendation or a form of?
Well, I don't know if because I'm hearing for this, you know, what they might come back with or whatever, but I'm I guess we make, we can make a motion that we ask them to consider doing what they did last year and give us, give us the opportunity to do it after budget. Failing that, I, I won't support at this point in time, uh, an increase that for all the reasons I don't, I don't want to go through it all again, but and I would also look to previous council, whoever we, we or they might be to rationalize some of the other elements that I mentioned about GST, which if you're caught in that tax or not tax, at least we keep all the tax. It doesn't go to the federal government.
So are you prepared to make a motion?
Well, I'm not sure what to make the motion of.
Worship.
I would like to see Fortis answer to that question, but I if, if we don't have time to do that, then I, I would move that we leave it unchanged.
Just to clarify, worship, just a question for clarification. Who's pushing the 2% increase? Is it our administration or is Fortis saying we want you to go to 17%? It's us? Oh, okay. I just needed that clarification. So further understand then if we leave it at the 15%, we just need a budget time to become way a lot more frugal. Is, is that what I'm, I'm hearing?
I think it's good comments, Counsel Harrison, what for identifying as administration is a revenue deficit, if you can use those two in the same sentence. That were going to be quite short requirement of a revenue. Administration seeing this as, as a annual conversation. And he heard it. I'm not pitching it, but franchise fees, it's all properties in whatever form. Not just residential, non-residential, it's schools that are, you know, collect tax from schools, et cetera. So that's, that's why is we only have a small part of revenue sources, franchise fees being one, rates and fees, taxes being the primary. We're stating that we, we, we're anticipating a pretty good knock on demand unless you want to adjust service levels. But to achieve current service levels, there's going to be a revenue draw somewhere. We're just saying kind of broaden out into different sources to, to make it work. And that's, that's really our recommendation. I think Eric can want to speak for you.
And your worship through to CEO Becker, totally understand that and appreciate what Director Victor's has brought forward, but I guess I would support Counsel Bates and go back to Fortis and tell them we'll have a decision or whoever will have a decision by December 1st.
There you go. That's, so are you, who's going to make a motion?
I'll let Counselor Barkley make that.
So in the case that we decide to do that and Fortis comes back and says, you've missed the windmill. You can do it again next year. That's the.
So be it.
So be it.
That would be, that would be my opinion. So be it. And, and then whoever's doing the budget and coming up with next year's recommendation, one of the phrases that should be tasked of them is, okay, here's, here's your budget. We see we've created a shortfall which we're covering, however. Then let's, let's make the decision at budget time that next year we're going to raise them. But you could do that proactively and, and actually have a resolution or something that says same council is going to meet the next year and have to deal with it.
Yes. Again, I don't want to go too far, Eric, if I don't get nervous. But Eric has identified areas of improvements within our, our models, our systems. We'll talk about that with new council and the onboarding, but you know, is, is financial planning, financial forecasting that needs to occur to set council up in a place to make decisions at any given time based on, on data, not weight. So that's something Eric has identified and something we need to get formal direction on is to, to build out some of these systems as a, as a corporate focus. So that, that's forthcoming over the next few weeks, that conversation.
Your worship, just question to CAO and Director Victor. So I, I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the anticipated response from our request is going to be that you had till this day and you're not going to allow, we won't allow any increases. It's going to be set at 15% and your potential for any increase will just have to be forfeited till next year. Is that what a potential, like the probability is quite high that's going to happen?
I believe we did already send an email off to Fortis and they were very firm in, in the timeline already. Okay. So we didn't ask specifically why the difference last year, not this year. But just, we really found out, I think we got the email at the end of September and basically told them we have to have it in by November 1st, right?
Okay. And then these, the stats you have on the screen right now, that was as of, when was that last collected? Because there's, there could be a potential that all these municipalities are obviously in the same crunch. And these numbers might not actually be what they are as of tomorrow.
Absolutely. Um. I'm not sure of the date. That probably wouldn't have anyone who is doing increases for 2022, right? Like those would be 2021 rates.
Okay. So we have to just be prepared as a council that we're going to leave whatever dollar, whatever percentage, whatever reflects as dollar value. We're leaving that potentially on the table and we're just going to leave that for one calendar year because we can't make an adjustment till next November then.
Correct. And $200,000 we get off 2% to do a tax increase. That's about a two and a half percent tax increase to get the same kind of dollar value.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
No, but I'll make one. Okay. Just, I think the easiest way to make this clear is to vote on the recommended motion, which is we approve the 2024 franchise fee increase to 17% and then we vote on it from there.
All right. We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Defeated? But don't, don't give up.
So your worship, did you want another motion with respect or will you just go ahead and do that?
No, I think your worship, Counsel Barkley, council's advocacy role, maybe coming through the chair of the mayor for what I foresee you about to say, but I think it comes a little bit more, comes with more influence when it comes from the elected official.
Yeah.
From council.
Okay. Well, I, I will make a motion then that we direct administration to contact Fortis and tell them that we will have an answer on their franchise fees by December 1st and also ask why they have changed their requirements from last year and to remind them of our budget cycles and how difficult it is to do this prior to budget.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Carrie? Thank you, Counsel Berkeley. All right. Next item on the agenda or the sales rate riders.
Thank you, worship. So this is for the 2022 Echo Gas franchise fee rate. We are looking to have you just review the current franchise fee and approve the rate to remain the same at 27%. As well with Echo, we have a franchise free agreement and in that we have the ability to change the franchise fee percentage yearly. The consumer pays based on distribution chart, distribution charges calculated at the current franchise fee. A sheet has been provided to show the current riders of selected municipalities. These fees are charged to the individual user, not just title holder of each property. So the current franchise fee is 27%, which was forecasted to generate $627,593 in franchise fee revenue in 2021. We are going to be a little bit low on that. We're going to be just under that $600,000 mark. So we're not going to quite hit that. They have given us a forecasted delivery tariff for 2022 and they say that's almost $2.7 million. So based on that, 27% is $726,378, which is actually an increase of $98,785 for 2022. So we are not looking to increase the franchise fee currently. And when we compare this to other municipalities, we're kind of in that middle of the percentile group. And then 1% increase would only generate an approximate of $26,902. So I would like council to approve the 2022 Echo Gas franchise fee to remain at 27%.
Counsel, are you?
I would make that motion, your worship.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you.
Your worship, just in light of the previous RFD, would council consider sending a similar letter to Atco in light of the timing of their franchise fee?
Yeah.
And so that resolution would be required, please.
I'll make that motion that we send that similar letter to Atco. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right. Citizen prospectus survey results. RFD. R F D. Sorry. All right. Third quarter financials.
Thank you, worship. So each year administration presents quarterly financials for council to review and approve. The financials currently being presented are for the third quarter of twenty twenty one, January first to this September thirtieth, twenty twenty one cumulative. Administration has reviewed the financial information being presented, the actual figures have been compared to the approved. Final budget for the year in the twenty twenty one final budget was approved on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Administration believes this to be a true representation of the state of the financials as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The financials show an overall revenue of eighty six percent of budget compared to a seventy five percent measurable for third quarter. Upon reviewing twenty twenty third quarter, this is actually three percent higher than last year. So a couple of the revenue departments that are below that seventy five percent measurable. Are the policing department and that's because we have not yet received the policing grant. Uh, community peace officer, we've just had lower fines and people not paying fines as much due to. A little bit lack of money. Storm sewer, so we're sitting at seventy percent, this is the first year that we've had the storm sewer charge. So we'll make sure that we do a proper assessment for twenty twenty two to make sure everything's being built correctly. Um, the sewer department is only at sixty nine percent, however, the majority of this rate is actually consumption based revenue, so. We're just lower on that consumption base. Um, programming, um, most of the, a lot of the programs have been canceled due to COVID and same with the arena. Um, it only just recently opened, it has been closed for the first half of the year. Taxes were due at the end of June twenty twenty one, as of September thirtieth, there was two hundred and fifty five thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars of current years outstanding taxes. So this equates to about two point three percent of unpaid taxes in twenty twenty one. So at the end of. At the end of second quarter, we were sitting at about four point six percent unpaid taxes, so we've kind of cut that in half in the last three months, so we should be sitting at a pretty good. Position by the end of the year. So the financials show an overall expense of sixty three percent of budget compared to seventy five percent measurable for, for the third quarter. And upon reviewing this twenty twenty second quarter, this is one percent higher than last year, but we did do some pretty big cuts last year, so it makes sense. Some of the expenses that are higher than the seventy five percent measurable are the general admin department. And a lot of those fees like insurance and the audit are paid at the beginning of the year. Emergency management is quite a bit higher than budgeted, but that is where all of our COVID expenses are coming out. Community bus, the requisition to the Legion occurs early in the year. F C S S, um, the F C S S grant funding has been fully funded. Campground is sitting at eighty seven percent and this is due to increased electricity costs and that is because um, the campground was used throughout the winter this year. So there was a big drain on the electricity. And library, so the requisitions of library occurs early in the year as well. So pandemic expenses to date are four thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty one cents and seventy five thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and forty one cents for wages. We will continue to track and allocate any time and expenses that are a result of COVID, just as we did for twenty twenty. In the last three months, we've only spent just under seven hundred dollars on COVID expenses, so they're really starting to slow down on what we've, what we've needed to spend. So I would like council to approve the third quarter financials as presented.
You have one question, uh, Erica. Gas tax. Is that reported in the revenue sharing?
No, so that is um, capital funding, this is only operating. You talk about the federal gas tax?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be in our capital. Like capital revenue, that's not tracked in, in the financials this way.
What are their sources of capital revenue, M S I?
M S I, federal gas, we have the building Canada.
Federal gas actually specified for capital?
Yes.
By the government?
Yeah, so federal gases is very specific on what we can use that money for. Uh, we can't use it for, to bring it into our operating budget.
So then those. And you have about a, an estimated number for M S I yet?
I actually looked um, about a week or so ago and they didn't have the numbers up for next year yet.
So yeah. Okay.
I'll continue to look every few days, just because I mentioned to know what it's going to be, so.
Your worship, just a question for Director Vickers, you, you were mentioning that the EMS and the COVID expense, like why does it drop so much?
So.
Recently.
We just haven't been buying any more expenses, like.
Okay.
No more Clorox wipes, no more hand sanitizer, things like that, we've, we still do have quite a. Like a stockpile of it, I guess. Um, and to be fair, we've been quite lucky with our staffing and we haven't had. Too many sick people, so we haven't had any wages like that.
Okay, thank you, I, I just know in the recent um, police and safe community committee, there seemed to be some pressure, right, being downloaded. Onto EMS, but maybe that's kind of a different. Different area than what. This is because it was something that we were rather concerned about.
I, as Council Barkley's comments, yeah, it's, there is that draw on EMS typically of, as uh, using fires of first response, that's a long. Long uh. Issue that's been politically charged, I know there's been discussion on the intake on EMS. And yeah, that's not a chargeable function um, to, to tell us something maybe we could talk about um. If we are. Have an increased service requirement for fire protective services, that's something we should be inquiring about. Let's say, I think that's a good point, Council Berkeley.
Well, I think in that meeting, we made a motion, right, that, that was one of the actual items that. Mr. Try to find out, and then my other question, Director Vickers, is just on the return on investment, some, it's, it's quite low, is that because that? You get some of that at year end?
It is a bit lower this year, we, um, the percent like are, it hasn't been as high as it is in past years.
So the interest that.
Is quite low this year.
Okay, and I know in the past, um, prior to you, um, we had discussed potentially looking at some. I guess other avenues for that investment to kind of outside of. A, a bank, you know, maybe at a brokerage or something where, where we could invest that a little bit higher percentage and still guaranteed.
And one of the things that will be on my priority list next year is to redo the investment policy.
Okay.
And um, and help get a cash flow analysis, see how much money we need in our bank versus how much we can. Invest and, and make our money, make a little bit more money.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Your worship, I would make a motion that council approves the third quarter financials as presented.
All right.
And I, and I do have a question just about the. Uh, the campground, is that? Is that going to be something that's going to be a new status quo that uh, is going to, you may not have the answer. Um, but is that something that is going to be maybe growing in popularity to uh, do in future seasons?
Uh, we did just be with the uh, town crown representatives, that's, it is not uh, something that they're looking to go forward with. Uh, any further, so it was kind of a one-time trial. Uh, they have not expressed that need to keep it open other than uh, for some uh. Festivals and, and other events, but not to have it open and run as an actual campground during the winter.
Thank you.
Worship, I had one other question too. Um, through to Director Vickers, um, you mentioned the unpaid taxes had been trimmed a lot from the last quarter. How do they compare to last year, is that kind of normal where we're at now or?
Um, I didn't check where we were sitting last year at the end of third quarter, um. But.
I was normally say we can get that another day, but maybe not, thank you.
I definitely can't get that information and email that out to you guys if you'd like.
Yeah, it, it looks like it's very much under control, I'm just curious if, if there was a trend, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Well, it wraps up our agenda. Short of correspondence, if there's anything in there.
I see one item of note under the uh, police and safe community committee meeting. I'm not listed as being present, but I was, I had my screen turned on. I didn't say much, but I was there. And I didn't show you my picture, she couldn't see what I was really doing, but I was there.
Okay, no uh. No discussion on correspondence? Someone like to move, we accept for, for information.
I saw movie worship, we accept for permission.
Thank you, counselors. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Quickly around the table, Counselor Hill.
Your worship, uh, I don't really have much to add. This evening. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Counselor Bates.
I guess back to the first of October, because we didn't have a meeting last week. October the second, I did attend the domestic violence uh, March and made. Made comments on behalf of the mayor, um, October the fifth, M P C. And October the sixth, participated in the forum, which of course was an extracurricular activity, because that's not part of my current council business. Thank you.
The Barkley.
Tended Banjo Bay's retirement, so sad to see him go, but certainly wish him the best. Also participated in an H S Central Zone meeting, uh, was up around COVID and impacts on. Not just the Red Deer Hospital, but our rural hospitals as well. Certainly quite the uh, the outlook, uh, tended the domestic violence event on October the second. Like Counselor Bates, the October sixth forum, um, then October seventh, we had a Parkland Foundation meeting. They have had a breakout at, at Park, at Autumn Grove, um, breakout is one resident. Seems to be totally under control, but when that happens, of course, um. Everyone must isolate and they had two rounds of prevalence testing, so they're hoping by October eighteen, things will be back up and. And open, Bethany has implemented mandatory vaccinations for staff, um. They've done that at all their facilities and there's one hundred percent compliance here in Innisfail. And um, I guess I just had a question for Director Kennedy. A resident sent me a photograph, forty seventh avenue on their waste management seems to be. They got notifications going to be picked up on the front, on the street side instead of the back alley. And they have a very steep front yard, it's four pluses along there and very steep front with lots of steps are quite concerned, especially coming wintertime and I'm wondering why. Maybe you, you could find out or maybe you already know why the service has been changed, because that was one of the reasons that. You know, I think at the time we hired three sixty was because they could do back alley pickup where the other provider couldn't.
Yeah, um, we did um. Go to the residences along three blocks uh, in order to move from back lane to, to front street. Uh, it is due to the safety of the back, in the back lanes, we're having um. Various issues with trying to do pickups in the back lanes in those two areas, um, so we are, uh, we did request. That uh. All the residents go on and we are aware of the one four plaques, uh, we did talk to the business manager along there to look at maybe putting in a. Uh, garbage bin instead of having individuals, uh, so we are trying to come up with a solution for that one residence, but it is due to safety. Um, for, for the garbage company, they, they are able to do it, it's just becoming a quite hazard.
Sorry, your worship, turn to Director Kenny, is it safety due to the over, overhead wires or?
It's various, it's steepness of the, of the back lanes as well, um, the, during the wintertime, the garbage truck is, has various concerns with that. Uh, going through that intersection in the back lanes as well as just um. They're very narrow.
Yeah.
Due to this, to the residents there, so.
Well, thanks for um, trying to find a happy medium, I'm, I'm sure the residents would be very happy, it is fairly steep down that. Front slope in front of their place, so thanks.
Okay, uh. I had uh. Another extensive water wastewater commission meeting last Friday, which. We covered quite a bit of territory, we gave the uh. The C O and you uh. One, one year contract extension. Um, and uh. But the, the news I wasn't pleased with is that they're going to be looking at it. An eight percent, or an eight, not eight percent. Eight cents increase on wastewater. About three point three percent, I think it works out. But uh, that's, that's just preliminary right now, the working numbers, but. Inflation, cost of materials, chemicals, utilities, everything is uh, going up, so I think. I'm sure your, you. Your staff are just as familiar with the potential for this. Inflation that's happening on supplies and uh.
Your worship, does that include anything from the city of Red Deer?
No.
Thank you.
We haven't heard from them yet. So uh. Yeah, they haven't indicated a, a difference or a change, usually they do give us some warning, but uh. Which one?
Danny? Did you? Oh, you're done? I guess so. Well. Are you sure? Yeah, you're good, okay. Um, since we were last here, I went for the pizza with Dan. I uh. Watched the Zoom of the candidates, I thought that's quite informative, attended a joint use. Uh, meeting on Thursday as well as a historical village meeting. And uh, this is my last chance to say something here, so I'm just, say I was proud to sit here for eight years and uh, I hope I contributed something. And uh, be seen year round, I might have applied for a committee or two, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you, worship. I attended M P C, uh, also uh, the domestic violence march, the first annual. And Dan's retirement party. And uh, yeah, I've only been here for seventeen months and it's been a real slice. I hope to see some of you or all of you again in, on the morning of October nineteenth, but if not, it's been a real pleasure. And uh, best wishes to Counselor Reberger, I've learned a lot from you, Danny. And uh, you are a wealth of corporate knowledge and I would expect that we'll be drawing upon that somewhere down the road, so. Yeah, thank you, all of you, it's been, uh, it's been a great seventeen months, so. Uh, just keep up the good work, thank you.
Oh, it is time to retire. Anyways, uh, sorry for the disruption there anyways.
Oh, no worries, my wife does it to me all the time. Hope she's not watching.
Anyways, yeah, I uh. It's going to be tough, uh, this. I mean, all this supply shortages across the world is just going to be dynamite here, it's getting worse and it's. I mean, all this supply shortages across the world is just going to be dynamite here. It's getting worse and it's it's not going to be good for a lot of things in the consumer. World, but anyways.
Your worship, yes.
That contract with Red Deer for the wastewater, is that ever negotiated? Like, is there a term to it? Like, is there a way that the commission members can actually sit and negotiate with the city of Red Deer? Because it just seems like they just keep raising the price, and there's going to be a time when when does it stop? When it comes to utilities, not only wastewater, but the whole big picture kind of thing. So is there a way that 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 can be addressed?
Through the utilities board. Yes, there's an appeal process. They've, we've never had any success with it in suing, you know. Discussions with Red Deer. Deer has a just a attitude that, you know, this is what it costs us to treat it. And they, you know, it's it's hard to argue with them because there's no no, it's not like it's two separate streams or different. If it takes more chemical to treat ours and theirs and this and that. So we just get lumped in with the cost of the whole their process. And they establish a cost of their process and pass that on to us. On a volume basis, but yeah, it's it's tough, but Water Commission, I'm not sure. I don't see. There may be some increases there, but certainly less than that, but. I guess I do want to just say thank you too for the last four years working with this council. And I think I but I I'm not sure even sure I've lost count. I think it's twenty four years or something, but then I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed all the time on council. With the exception of maybe the last year with this COVID thing, and it's made it's it's changed people's attitudes so so much that it's hard to, you know, some people are just just plain tired of it bitter and 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 anyways, I hope I hope there's something relief here in the near future, but you know, you'll have your hands full. Finishing it off anyways.
So your worship, I just wanted to say something because I kind of forgot to, but thanks to Counselor Reberger. Been a great role model for people like me, and also thank you so much to you because you're you spent twenty three, twenty four years at this, and and that's a lot of time. And I think the community should give you a heartfelt thank you for all the time you've you've spent doing what you've been doing. And yes, the year is hard, and we are all tired of it, very tired of it. And you're right, hopefully things will move on, but thanks for for everything, and we wish you and Bev and Sophie.
Yeah.
All the best.
Hey, thank you very much. I enjoyed it. Where are we at here? We got to go in camera now?
Your worship, there is somebody that was to take advantage of open mic.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I would just I have two areas of comment. First, I have a couple of comments about the delegation that spoke about the restrictions exemptions program. I believe this council has taken a very appropriate approach focusing on the public health restrictions that are mandated. We are in a public health emergency. And that what I see you doing is keeping the safety of the citizens paramount as a community. You're looking after the common good. And yes, that does put pressure on individual choice, but when it comes to individual choice, there's also responsibility and consequences. So I would encourage you to keep monitoring your support for businesses that way, how they can adapt and doing your homework as you are on making sure that the rules that you put in place to apply that program continue to be monitored. So I think you're doing a good job, and I would encourage you to keep on that general track. And secondly, I'd like to add my thanks to Jim and Danny, well, to all of you. And I hope everything works out election wise for all of you, but Jim and Danny that won't be back in these capacities. Thank you very much. And finally, I'd like to thank Todd and his staff. Todd's been here four years and a big turnaround in the operations thing, the attitude, the trustworthiness, and I think the citizens see that, and it's reflected in that survey. So thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, that's it. Stephen.
Erica, I guess I'll just, yeah, wish all the best to the candidates that are running again, Councilor. And Jim and Danny, thanks. For me, this is new. This has been a new experience coming with on. So I'd like to thank all of you for all your support.
I'll just echo that. Just thank you for all your dedication and hard work, and it's it's pretty selfless to be a public servant. I'm sure it's not an easy, an easy job, right? And I really appreciate all that you guys have done.
Yeah, I'll just continue and thank you. And yeah, hopefully Danny gets in on STAB and we're good to go because we'll need him. I will just update that the pool has been closed since Friday with mechanical issues. The last I have heard, it is back and running and circulating. So hopefully it will be operational tomorrow if a little chilly, but yeah, that's the update.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you very much.
Me as well. I'm new, so thank you for your patience. With the last.
He said something, or I would have probably missed you.
With the last two council meetings. So thank you very much. Best of luck to the candidates that are running. And good luck in your future endeavors for Danny and Mayor.
You know, we met with local business individual last week and and the individual command administration, what we're doing and council for sure. And we I made a comment about to continue fight for integrity as a public servant. It's it's constant. And it's, I said, we're here to serve. We care all staff. We're very dedicated as you are. But it is a constant in public service. Part of that is is understanding that you need to continue work through the muck of question of integrity, because it's that's the challenge, but it's we take the rewards awards when you can get them. But it does not stop that challenge of integrity, which is unfortunate. And I think you're right, your worship, social media, and even today with COVID is yeah, that's probably going to be continual, like not more so.
That's for sure. Ron, have you got any comments out there? Is that Ron?
No.
I can't. Ron.
Perfect.
Any comments? Most of the time. What this gentleman back here? And you too. You bet. Okay, now would we accept motion to go in camera?
Your worship, just I'd make a point of order first.
I've got two minutes.
I'll move that we go past six o'clock of this meeting.
All in favor? Okay. Now, Counselor Hill.
I'll move that we move in camera, even though we did skip upcoming events, but.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, couple minute break, please.
Sorry. We're good. We'll delay. I didn't know. I didn't know they're doing that. What is it? Just a proclamation? Oh. Yeah, stop zoom.